All right, good morning. Everyone, today is the Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, April 5th, 2023, 8:00 AM at the Town Hall Green Room. Can we all stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where's Carol?
She's really late.
Yeah, maybe those eight o'clock. Yeah, exactly.
All right, so before we kind of get into the meeting, I have to leave early at the meeting, so hopefully when Carol shows up at some point, I'll be shifting it over to her. So just want to let everybody know. We'll move on to item number two, which are visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time? Any visitors? None?
Gentlemen, just raise your hand.
Do I, do we have to recognize ourselves?
No, you're good. Yep. Thank you, Steve. All right, move on to item number three, which is the approval of the minutes from the March 15th, 2023 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Closed, abstained. Onto item number four, which are the appointments and reappointments. So coastal resiliency task force, we've talked about it a couple of meetings now. We have the purpose and the charge that Carl presented, membership. We have some people that have come forth, so not a full slate at this point, but at this point, I think we should just move forward with appointing the ones that are on the slate right now, and then we can continue to, you know, backfill the other positions that we need. So, Carrie, you would put your name forth for council?
I would be willing to be there if I'm not.
So at some point, we'll deal with that. And then planning and zoning, we need, still need one sustainability and Marina owner. So those are the ones that are open. At this point, we should probably just appoint from the Conservation Commission, Nick Webb, from Harbor Management Commission, Martin Jaffe, Beach Association representative is Kate Zetic, and Robin, oh gosh, I'm not even going to say that last name.
Conkey.
Nonkey?
Conkey.
Conkey, okay, there you go. So do we have a motion to appoint those three?
I make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is Tom Welch considered?
But we were going to do these first, and then there's a discussion now that maybe we open it up to the public, because if we can't get people to come forward, but yes, his name was put forth. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you. So maybe at the next meeting, we can kind of wrap up maybe council, and see if we can get somebody from planning and zoning, and then at that point, maybe go through and open it up for the public. And then the next appointment is for Abby Pierceall, for representative to the Regional Housing Committee. Motion to approve?
I make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, abstained. Thank you very much. Item number five is the po-
I'm sorry.
Yep. Oh, we're going to put that in now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we have, so we're going to need a motion to add to the agenda, an appointment to the Conservation Committee?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion to amend the agenda, to put it in at, what, under four?
Correct.
Yeah, under item four.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Joan is here. She's put her name forth for the Conservation Committee. It's Joan Ulate?
Ulate.
Ulate, okay, great. First, I guess, obviously, as we know, we invite them to show up to meetings. Does anybody have any questions or comments for her at this point? Hearing done, then we can make a motion to appoint.
This is just a regular town-
Conservation Committee, yep.
Uh, conservation.
Conservation Committee, yep. Okay, motion. Second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you, Joan. See how easy that is?
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up. And then just, Joan, all you have to do is you're going to have to go up to the town clerk here and just get sworn in for your first meeting.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Item number five, poet laureate quarterly update. We have Kathy Weiss here to present.
Good morning, and Kathy, National Poetry Month. I just want to let you know that I am up to date on all my goals and activities as stated in my three-year plan that I presented on my one-year anniversary, best June. I've attended and participated in all monthly board meetings of the Connecticut Coalition of Poets Laureate, and have assisted them when asked. I've held a poetry reading on Valentine's Day, provided refreshments at the Town Annex for seniors. It was very well-attended. I did not want to exclude seniors who did not have transportation, so I gave a poetry reading at Glen Haven, and they liked it so much, they asked me back, and I have been doing readings and workshops there. I have a solo show in the Annex that was, had a reception that was a thank you. I invited all the nonprofits in town, and they all had a secret, all my paintings had a secret nonprofit in back, and everybody voted, and I had a tie, so I gave away two grants, so, and then I gave another, I sold three paintings, so I gave another grant to the garden club, and then I gave a grant to the tree committee, which you will be receiving a grant from the community foundation through my Sunrise Fund, to plant a poetry. And they've going to have, they've, they've found a location on the congregational church grounds close to the street. It's going to be, it's probably going to be planted early in May, because we have Earth Day and we have Arbor Day in April. It's, it's going to provide a place of respite, eventually a chair or bench. I've provided funds for maintenance in a plaque, and hopefully, it's located at a place, they're trying to, they've chosen a place where it could be a place for poetry reading, should I ever be asked to read on any town event during the arts events in town. And so, there's that. My biggest accomplishment is, I'm so excited, a year and a half in the making, Portraits of Clinton Poetry Project. This is an anthology of poems of all my workshops that my interns and I taught in town and at senior centers, and we, everybody, so many people in Clinton are represented here, seniors, the students at Morgan, town people that you know on boards. So we're having a poetry reading, April 20th, at the Henry Carter Hall Library. And what better way to celebrate Poetry Month? So far, it's, I mean, you know, so many people have pre-bought books, and, and it's, I expect it's going to be very well-attended. I've arranged transportation from volunteers to, to transport the seniors who wrote poems that do not drive. So I do not ever exclude anyone in town, and my mission has been to serve all ages and groups. So I hope you will show your support, because there's going to be a large town presence here. Lee Jacobus will be introducing me. I just think this, I was interviewed on IRCT radio yesterday, and it was all about Clinton. It was about this project, it was about other things. I read the poem that I wrote, Clinton for the state. So I will send the link, and I will send my notes. The other things I will be doing is the Carnival of the Animals, May 20th. That will be at Andrews Town Hall. I'm partnering with Starship Dance Theater. It is a celebration of classical music, dance, and poetry for preschool children and school-age children. So I will be doing that. And then I have been asked to design another poem for Memorial Day. So that will conclude my activities for the spring. And June will be my second anniversary. I don't feel the need to give another update, because I don't really, I bulked up my activities in spring. This was a lot, because I don't want to conflict with anything going on in the summer, the fairs, the arts events, all of that. So over the summer, in my next and final year, I'll be working with Coalition to help establish guidelines for all towns in Connecticut as to the requirements to appoint a poet laureate. And I will, they've asked me to assist. We have no poet laureate in Madison, Westbrook, Killingworth. They, they want me to assist in bringing poet laureates in. A state senator wants a laureate in every town, because it is very beneficial to have a laureate, and I'm very proud to serve. So if there's no questions-
You won't see me, but I'll continue to-
Because I work alone and I'm self-directed, I will continue to send you quarterly updates by email, but I probably won't need to see you again until six months before my appointment ends. That will be in January. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good job, thank you.
Okay, on to item number six, which is the Clinton Arts Festival. They're going to request an exception to ordinance 194-4A and 194-5A regarding the consumption of alcohol beverages on town property. They'll be holding their event this year at the Pearson School. It's in order for them to have the sale of alcoholic beverages. They would need that exception that we've provided in the past to them, so we would just look for a motion to make that exception.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Great, thank you. All right, Steve, thank you. Next up is the Police Department, the acceptance of the Hometown Foundation Grant and an update on the Justice Navigator Report. Chief?
Good morning, everyone, thank you. I hope you get the package of information that we sent. I know K9 Sonny, and getting old, he's at nine years old now. Unfortunately, he was one of the last dogs that was trained to indicate cannabis, and now since the state legislature has made recreational cannabis legal in the state of Connecticut, he has lost a good portion of what we brought him on for. Obviously, we don't need him to detect cannabis any longer, but we do still have a major problem with fentanyl. Fentanyl is a very dangerous narcotic, and it's transdermal, which means if you touch it, it's transmitted through the skin, and you can easily overdose just by checking and touching a powder. So we still need the narcotics detection piece of our K9. It's extremely important for the safety of our officers and the safety of the public. We have received a grant, if you're willing to accept it, which will pay 100% for the K9. We've run this program pretty much from a very small portion of municipal funds, the K9 program line item, and my municipal budget is only $3,500 a year, which basically just covers his food. The rest is all given to us through donations. I don't know, I don't see any change to that methodology. It's worked for the past six years. It's worked very well. So I would ask that you would please approve the grant. We have a handpicked shepherd. We're going to try and go for another six months, or maybe another year with Sonny, but our, our master trainer has selected a dog that he feels is really a superior K9 for us, and Corporal Frye has really done a tremendous job with the dog. He's basically a master trainer at this point himself. And they did not want this dog to leave the group, the regional group that we train with, so it's pretty much been hand-selected for us. We spent a little time now mating it, make sure that it would fit with the handler, and so long as we have the ability to accept the grant, we will be able to implement the program within the dog.
Thanks, Chief. Anybody have any questions? If there are no questions, make a motion to accept the grant.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you, Chief.
Greatly appreciated. The second piece is, we have been working with the Center for Policing Equity for nearly two years now, transmitting a lot of data on all of our police contacts that we have. They are an independent agency which looks at any possible disparities through policing agencies' interactions with the general public through motor vehicle stops, pedestrian stops, calls for service, and a great volume of data. They have completed the Justice Navigator Report for us, and we've done very, very well. Thankfully, I will say that they weren't able to give us any, any type of analysis on our uses of force, because our uses of force are so small that there was not enough data there to give us any type of reading. We fare very well. We have very egalitarian motor vehicle stops. We have one area where we were a little bit high, which is motor vehicle searches of Hispanics and African-Americans. Very, very small disparity there. We think, obviously, that's driven mostly by the mall. We get a lot of calls for service up there for shoplifting with a car description and a person description. We stop the car and then search the car because, because of the crime that's been reported to us. So I'm having, I'm having CPE actually do a drill down to see if that is location-driven or if it's officer-driven. If I have one officer that sees three stopping a certain group of individuals and searching them at an off rate, that needs to be addressed. But we're, they're doing the drill down of data for us for that. They've been here already. They've talked to a number of groups. They've talked to the Human Rights Committee. They've talked to another, another set of people throughout the town. So my commission likes the report. We'd like to do a public rollout of it, and they will support us for that. Again, this is completely a voluntary process, and I think it's very important at this point in time, at this point in policing here in Connecticut and across the country, that we represent ourselves as completely transparent and accountable, and this is an outside agency, very much like an accreditation agency, that comes in and verifies that we are doing what we say. We are completely fair, honest, accountable. We work every day to serve this community with, you know, honor, integrity, and professionalism. Those are our cornerstones, and I think this just reinforces it. And my commission wanted me to just come in and let you know that hopefully, the first week of June, we would hold a public meeting to roll out this report. It's very, I think it's very complimentary to the agency, and again, very complimentary to the town. But they wanted me to make the official notification to you, so if you can take any feedback, or you can provide any feedback you wish to my commission.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
And actually, that's an important meeting to have, I think, getting, making sure everybody in our community knows what's going on here, so that they can understand kind of, you know, how we do things here, as opposed to what happens outside our area. So, thank you again. You and your staff.
Is there a breakout in that report of what you do with youth and how you're handling the youth, and when, you know, they do something wrong, and how you handle that situation?
Yeah, we can actually, as you'll link, the report is actually now completed, so we can send the Town Council a copy of that report before we file public with it. It basically gives an overview of all the community services that we do. We've been complimented by CPE for the amount of non-traditional policing that we actually do. We're engaged in a number of community outreach projects, and we're, we interface with a lot of community groups to actually try and prevent crime and interface with the community at a different level than just enforcement. So we receive very high compliments from them on that as well.
Yeah, and that's why I asked the question. I've been in this town for a long time. I have a lot of kids, and I've noticed since you've been here, the biggest compliment I can give you is that you work with the youth, you know, to, to correct, instead of, you know, constantly coming down with the hammer, to guide and correct and provide and be above the programs and things like that, so.
We always feel that, you know, if we can prevent a crime from happening, we're far more successful than whatever response we can bring to it. So that's kind of the philosophy we march forward with, and we have a dedicated staff. We should all be very proud of the men and women who wear the badge in this town, because they really do care. They care about the community, they're always trying to make it better. It's not just a job for them. They're trying, in part to them to be problem solvers, not just report takers to come out and give you a case number and go on your way, if we can figure out a way to help you fix the problem. And I think it transmits, and all the correspondence we receive from the public, it talks about how they feel that our officers really are concerned about their problem, so.
Yeah, my compliments to you and your staff.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, it's not related to the current topic, though.
Sure, he's here.
I just have a question about school security, and I don't know whether this is the time for that, or whether we can have you back a new, another time to discuss that, because nothing is more predominant right now than that discussion. This is probably not the time for that, but I would really like to have that, that, you know, some, something-
Sure. So you understand that we do have a crisis advisory board, and we meet every single month, and that's myself, the fire department, school administration, school faculty, and we've been engaged in this for over two years now, so we're continually looking at school security. I'm always a little guarded as to talking about the things that we do, because it kind of gives away some of the pieces, but we are implementing a system, so we have real-time communication with all the faculty and staff and emergency responders, as well as parents of the students. We were working yesterday on reunification. I have an apartment-wide active shooter response drill planned for May. We're going to be doing a table-top exercise as soon as, as soon as school closes again. We're talking about facilities hardening. We do a facilities review every single year. We have a comprehensive school emergency plan, which is required by the state, which is over 250 pages at this point, that is updated by myself, the SCAP team, and Superintendent O'Donnell. Superintendent O'Donnell and I are very, very closely at school security, campus security. It's a priority for us, and we don't let it sit aside. We're always addressing it, and we do it every single month, and she and I do it more frequently, but we have an official meeting every month, and sometimes more often than that. Actually, the past three months, it's been, probably we've had six meetings trying to implement this technology, which we think is going to really help us in response time, and, and more importantly, getting information out in time of crisis.
Another more pedestrian issue is if perhaps in the future, we can talk about speeding and what it is that perhaps we can do to help with traffic planning, because that's an issue that we hear about a lot from people, and I certainly witness it a lot.
No, I understood. It's prevalent, and it's one of the most difficult issues for us to, to address. And the LTA, my commission acts as the local traffic authority, and that's the number-one complaint we hear as well, and we're always working on traffic calming issues that we get when-
Good? Thanks again, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, well, on to item number eight, public works line item transfer requests. So there's a request to increase for duct cleaning for 79, 47, 45, taken in from PD Cell Paint, PD Door Project, Dump Truck, and WSAM Land Use. Any questions about, first of all, the transfer? Nope? Here, none? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you all. And our second one is a town manager request for town beach land item transfer, which is the beach erosion study for $11,000, and that would come out of contingency. And this is to set up a capital account to fund engineering study on beach erosion.
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
Is that the specific, obvious erosion that's on the south and facing the island, Cedar Island?
Yes.
It's precipitously dropped off?
So that is to look at what are viable options to address the erosion, and then come up with solutions, coordinate with DEEP, coordinate with our project engineers for what could be a project, and then the project would have to come back for funding.
Does this address the area before the bridge at all, or is it strictly beyond the bridge into the beach?
Beyond the bridge into the beach, because there's, it's more significant erosion at that particular point. We're also looking at potential bridge replacement for access to the beach, and if you're going to do a bridge replacement, you would, that would be the time to do anything at the lower end.
I know. What is the, do we have something going on with the Waterside Bridge at this point? Is there, is there a repair in our, in our plan right now?
We have positioned the town to take advantage of state funding for bridge replacement.
All right, I knew there had been discussion of-
The program is 100% state-funded, so unlike our other ones where it's been 50/50 or 80/20, this would be fully funded by the state, but we give up engineering control to the state. It's a small price to pay to get the whole thing back for-
Yeah, okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Chairman's report, not much, well, actually, two little things. So, received an email through correspondence from Ginny Kazanova, who's president of the Arbor Club, and on April 20, what's the date? April 28th. They're going to do a tree planting celebration, April 28th, at the Peters Complex, near the Swan Pavilion at 10:00 AM, and they've invited, invited the council to attend. They'll be planting the trees, so they've opened up an invite to us. So just put that on calendars, if you're around and you want to attend. The second item is, in light of the recent barrage of emails as it relates to the budget, I received an email from an individual who subsequently reached out to me and had concern that some of the correspondence in her letter was released to the public. I told her I would address this, but it's a very difficult thing to address, because correspondence to the council is correspondence to the council. We can discuss it, we can talk about it. It's basically public information. So I don't know kind of where all that was going to. This wasn't a letter that we received that said it's confidential and we shouldn't be releasing any of this information. It was, it was a comment about the budget, what an individual thought we should be doing with the budget. So I told her I would address it, but I really don't know what I'm addressing, because it's information that is correspondence to the council, and like other correspondence that we get from individuals, from the public, it is brought forth and it is discussed. So I don't know kind of what that all was related to, but-
Was it released on social media?
I guess there was a social media post as it related to our budget and the discussions that council previously had, so then that turned into a little bit of a firestorm about a lot of public opinion about the budget, and about, you know, what, what happened on the education budget. And so it seemed to be some of the same information. I kind of reviewed what was presented to the council, what was presented on, on this post, and it, and it seemed to be some of the same information, so I don't know kind of where that was headed. But again, as you know, it's budget season, so everything's fair game, and-
So you, you sent a letter from a citizen to the town council as public information?
Yes.
And so you told that person that, right?
Absolutely.
And that should be into that.
Yeah, I know, but I guess it was, you know, like I said, I, she said something to me, you know, and I told her I would bring it up to the council, but I don't really know what to say, other than it's public information. If somebody wants to present the letter to the council, it says confidential, and then, you know, then I guess that would be fine, but it wasn't in-
If they had said something was confidential, yeah.
So, but again, we can enjoy all that later tonight.
Yeah, even if they did, I guess that was going down a tangent. It may not be, right, just because they say it is.
Right. So, I said I would address it, I addressed it.
Chris, well, since you brought that up, I remember a conversation a while ago. As council members, we can respond to these letters, right? Because I remember once-
Individually?
Yes, individually?
No, no, no. I said individually, we shouldn't.
That's what I was remembering.
Shouldn't. Should not, yeah. Okay. Because then if you have one individual responding to something that goes out, I mean, we send it out to the council members when we get the correspondence, but if an individual responds, then it seems like that's the voice of, so, I mean, the majority of them are correspondence. If there's discussions that we feel that we bring it to the table so that we can talk about it, that's probably the path to go, as opposed to responding to that and then getting into a, into a back-and-forth. So, I mean, that's full transparency, we would want it to be brought in front of the council to discuss. So individually, no.
Okay. That was my question, yeah.
Okay. All right, I have to go. So you're taking over. But, see, it's, there's only a few left, so it doesn't matter. So we will move on to the town manager's report. And again, just a reminder, we have tonight at 6:00, I'm sure it's all on your calendars, for the budget discussion and public hearing. So I will see everybody this evening. Thank you.
Is that going to be down here or upstairs?
Here.
Here?
It's going to be here.
Sure. Yeah. All right. Thank you again.
Okay. Yep. Thank you, Chris.[1731.15]
Just in front of me.
Thank you, Chris.
Drive slow.
Oh, I'm good.
You have my written report, but the highlights to call your attention to hydraulic load testing that the WPCC will be starting deals with rounding out the study for how the community sewer septic system would work in the downtown. This was previously funded in the first round of ARPA allocations. They're moving forward through getting property owner approvals at this point in time. Approval has come back from the ownership of the Chips Plaza, authorizing them to do their test pit there. And then we're still waiting on approval from the property owner of the downtown parking lot behind Shore Appliance to allow for the excavation and the test pit to take place. The whole point is to see how, how much water the soils can absorb as part of a community septic system. So there'll be more on that as that works itself forward. Parking lots will be restored for the cut that was made. The town crews are not involved in it, it's 100% contractor work. At the COG meeting, there was a vote to provide additional funding to Clinton for a previously approved sidewalk project. A number of years ago, funding was provided to run sidewalks going east, going towards Stop &amp; Shop. That funding was woefully inadequate when it was originally requested. The town had to fund the engineering for it, it was not covered in the grant. With inflation, things have escalated, there is not enough right of way, so the DOT had to require more money to acquire right of way, and then the DOT had made other requests to expand the pedestrian infrastructure, so the project had ballooned rather significantly from the original request. Additional funding was provided in the transportation improvement program, approved at the COG level, the DOT needs to sign off on it. There is no additional money asked from the town, it's being picked up at the, at the regional level to have the project move forward. So that should allow that project, once the monies are in place, to move from design into construction at some point in time. Included in the contract, or in the report, we have made a decision to change who the town engineer is. We've been serviced by a firm called DTC for a number of years. We put that out for competitive proposal. Now that we have Abby on board, and a lot of the engineer work will be driven by land use, less by public works, we interviewed firms and made a selection to go with Cloe Harbor Associates, or CHA. So anything from the town engineer will have a new set of acronyms instead of the old set of acronyms. Cost is roughly the same, so there's no significant cost deviation, it's just a matter of a different, different firm, but continuing to give us the intensive hands-on service that we demand as a contractor, rather than some of these larger firms where you get lost in the shuffle, or they're thinking they're part of a bullpen, when they are actually, the engineer Cloe Harbor gets it, just like DTC understood that. Additional information, you're probably seeing their trucks now, I don't have enough of these for everyone, but if you're interested, this is information from GoNetSpeed. They are another high-speed internet provider coming into the area, so you can get high-speed internet from Frontier, which, they gave us a presentation on that last year as they switched over to fiber optic. GoNetSpeed is another fiber optic provider. From a community aesthetic standpoint, their equipment is attached to the wires, so unlike Frontier, you're not going to have big boxes hanging on the utility pole. Downside, I guess, for Clinton is, when you go further into the presentation, it shows you a map of the town, their footprint is, is going to be somewhat smaller. So Frontier goes border to border, Cable goes border to border, these folks are a little bit smaller footprint, that's been stated as a point to start, that they will build out more as there's more community demand beyond the area.
In that smaller footprint, where they would be, then it would be both?
In that smaller area, you would have your choice of Frontier, Cable, or GoNetSpeed. Once you get to the northern reaches, they're not building out their network at this point in time to get to that, get to that distance. So their trucks are in town, they are stringing their fiber, some of that work was started this week. If you go down Commerce Street right now, you'll find one of their trucks doing work this morning. So there's, that's yet another, another service that's being provided to residents in town that is a little unique from others in the area. Speaking of Commerce Street, the Commerce Street-Leffingwell Road historic district designation has been moving forward. Leffingwell Road is going to be cut out of the district because there was not enough historical assets there, nor continuity with Commerce Street, so the focus is just on, just on Commerce Street. There seems to be enough there with that smaller focus to rationalize a historic district, so the write-up is in draft stage now for review. Ultimately, there'll be another public outreach session once things are ready to move a little further along. There was a public outreach session at the beginning before any field work was done, where people in a potential district were invited to attend, ask questions, and so on and so forth. So the focus is now just on Commerce, not Commerce and Leffingwell. Union contract negotiations are ongoing, we are fully engaged with all but one of our unions on potential settlements going forward, so that will consume a fair amount of time going forward between now and the end of the fiscal year. The goal is to get something in position by the end of the fiscal year, if not within the next month or so afterwards, and again, try to avoid arbitration. Beyond that, that's the extent of what I have today.
Thank you. Any comments for Carl? Given the contract negotiations, do you have any reason to believe that the contingency you set aside could be lessened, or is it far too premature to go there?
It's far too premature to go there.
Just that I'd ask.
And the issue with having every union negotiated in the same year creates this bubble that previously did not exist, or prior to the town, well, anyway. It was, it was legacy, the situation was legacy to Carl. Okay, item, is any other discussion per Carl?
No.
Okay, item number 12, council discussion.
Anything? I know that as interested as Joe and Maureen are in everything that happens in town, they're particularly invested in the study.
The pickleball study.
The pickleball study, and so I wanted to ask about that.
Beau delivered to me some base maps, which show a number of park locations, and the engineer has sort of fixed a box, which allows for, I want to say, eight, eight pickleball courts to be positioned in the box, so he's tried to put that box at a couple of different park and rec locations. Right now, it's just at a fit test level. I gave the maps to Abby to review as it relates to inland wetlands and any buffer or regulatory issues that would come into play. And I know Beau wants to bring it to Park and Rec, so I'm sure Chris will have an opinion on that one. Then there's, the final phase is to take the mapping, compute that into cost, and then you would have a decision-making process at that point in time. Beau is pushing.
Sounds like progress.
Beau is pushing the engineer to have that done preferably before the next council meeting. I don't know how quickly that will happen. Abby's review should make, be helpful in helping the engineer focus for which potential locations are actually permissible by the town, rather than things, you don't want to put impervious surface in a wetlands buffer, that'll never get approved, so it's, where, where can you actually put them with the least amount of regulatory assets?
Carl, is, is the number eight going to make it harder for us to get, say, starting with two courts and ending with four? Is eight cutting us off at the knees? We're not going to get eight originally, and I understand that you want to be in a place where they grow, and we can add more, but is that going to hurt us find a place for the first two pickleball courts?
I don't believe it's going to hurt you.
Okay. Because eight is a much larger.
You should be having a mindset of looking for a location larger than one.
Yeah, 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 I agree. But eight is a.
You should be looking at where you can grow the program.
Yes.
And even if you don't build out eight, and you build out something less than eight, you still want to know the area, because you may, when you're thinking about this, there may be more amenities that you want to take into consideration, rather than just the actual court itself. There's been no conversation about lights, there's been no conversation about any kind of pavilion or shading, there's been no conversation about seating areas around it, it's just been courts, 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 courts. So you're still going to want to have an idea of space for other things that may go around the court, rather than just the court itself. If the court itself was your singular focus, then that should have been a conversation to try and restripe a tennis court at Morgan. And pickleball courts probably can have permeable surfaces, they don't have to be impermeable surfaces. That wouldn't be a restriction.
I think they are, right? Permeable, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's like a tennis court surface.
Anything else? Okay, moving. Oh, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Carl, you know, going into tonight, are we going to have more, I mean, I don't know, I kind of envisioned in my head, like, I know there's some moving parts, I know we're going to have a discussion on the Board of Ed budget, I'm sure, but, you know, and I sent the email out to everyone, just sort of my opinion on, you know, hope, given everything where it stands right now, that my desire would be to try to keep the mill rate constant. And I, and I also said in that email, and I, and I stand by what I said, I feel like tonight, we're going to have the town budget, it's probably going to be a little chaotic, it switches right over to our meeting. I felt like last year was, there was a lot to process if we, if we get numbers right there at that point to have a discussion. There's a whole bunch of people here, it's, it's a little bit hard for me, anyway, just to make an educated decision, so I don't know if there's a way to, you know, sort of say, here's where we are sort of tentatively, and what it would take to have a constant mill rate, and some, some bogies out there. So I don't know what your, if you could comment on that, Carl, what you think about that, and.
I have no direction from the council, as a group voting one way or the other, to calculate that, so going into the meeting, my expectation is I will be doing an awful lot of math on the fly to figure out those amounts. I already communicated to you guys last week, potential cuts to the town that I would be bringing forward. I also communicated to you what the healthcare reduction was for the Board of Ed, which I assume would be applied towards the 350 reduction that had been made thus far. So those are numbers that I know as of right now, and I could do the math around those numbers. If there's going to be other things put forward, restoration of the Board of Ed, or other town cuts, I don't know those, because no one has communicated that to me, so I'm assuming I'll be going into that meeting doing a lot of math. So the number you communicated to get to zero, it will be less, just by virtue of the fact that there will be cuts coming on the town side. If there's any other adjustments, I don't know what those are, I haven't been told, so I don't know how to prepare that.
So Carl, we stand at this, in this iteration, with 395,000 cut from capital and 89 from operations. This is where we stand now.
Correct.
And the.
And then I will give you.
And the 150, and, or, I'm sorry, the insurance, yeah.
And then I will give you the insurance numbers would go additional to the town side going into tonight.
Okay.
After tonight.
And, and just, with, just high, high-level math with the new grant list, is, is a mill somewhere around 1.7? And is that?
Had to change.
Okay.
Just in conjunction with that, based on all the information we got from you now, and the mill rate is going to increase by zero, I mean, 0.5 something, what was the latest one?
0.04.
0.04.
What was it?
I think it's 0.05.
Point?
But no, I'm not, don't hold me to that.
No, I thought that's what it had said.
A lowish number.
A lowish number. You know, what I was trying to figure back on what Chris was saying, just off the cuff, based on what Chris is trying to say, to get it right down to flat, what would that mean, or do you have an idea in the back of your head, just what that figure would be, that we'd have to cut from the budget to get to exactly flat? Because it's so, as you heard my comment back to you, Chris, it's so low now, it's almost like flat.
Yeah.
Just, how much more do we have to go to get it actually flat? Is it 100,000, 90,000?
I think the.
Just ballpark, I mean, this is.
Yeah, I think Chris was, the number when Chris sent out his email was 283, 283,000, and I think you're under 150, 160 now.
Okay, all right.
And that's not counting the town's health insurance cut?
Uh, no, I believe that includes the town's health insurance.
Okay. All right, so we have to probably find another 160,000.
Yeah, and that's why I asked about the mill, Dennis, so.
Good.
Like 1.7339, whatever number, that, that'll allow us to do quick math, whatever we end up after, after Carl and we are discussing, if we say it's 0.05, we just multiply that, and maybe it comes out to 85,000.
So, so what he just, what Carl just said is 160,000, so say 173 would be 1/10 of a percent.
Yeah.
So what about 1/10?
I'll just send you all an email with what the numbers are.
Yeah, would you please? That'd be nice, Carl.
Another thing is the rules of the public hearing. It would be really great if those were explained, because last time, questions were asked of the public, and we're not allowed to answer. Right. And I think that needs to be clear, that any question they ask has to be rhetorical, they can't expect an answer from us.
Well, the chairman really runs that. The chairman that we decide.
Is Chris going to be here? Is Chris going to be here?
So we can't answer, can the town manager answer, or nobody's can answer?
Nobody's supposed to answer.
I think that's important, and Chris, I, I talked to Chris about it before, because otherwise, it's, if you, if you state that upfront, then people realize that you're not agreeing with what they say, or disagreeing. We're just listening to them, because if you don't do that, it leads to a sense of frustration, like, they stand up and they say, blah, 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 they say their point, and we go, thank you, and they're like, thank you? What do you have to say about that? Yeah, and the answer is nothing, you know, so they need to know that upfront.
That'd be great, Chris.
Yeah.
That should be laid out first. And, and hopefully, I guess, before we start, Carl can give this update about the, right, Carl, you'll tell them now that all these additions and, you know, things that have happened within the last two weeks.
He can't do that.
And now where we stand.
He can't do that.
If you're.
The public hearing is, the public hearing is first.
You're asking me to do that, so.
Huh?
I'm, I'm not going to be a member of the public speaking at the public hearing, so if you expect that, you'll need to tell me to do that.
I can tell you at the meeting?
We tell you.
Or can I tell you now?
You should clear it with the chair.
Clear it with the chair.
We have a chair here.
But the agenda says it's a public.
Hey, there's a new chair. Okay, chair.
That's great. The agenda, the agenda says a public hearing, there's no place for us to speak until after the public hearing. Right. Period.
Correct. Right, as far as answering the people's questions.
As far as anything.
So we don't get back and forth, but.
As far as, as far as anything.
Right, I think before the public hearing, they should now know all the new facts, that they shouldn't come in here thinking that there's now a $350,000 reduction to the Board of Education that's not really a catastrophe. I mean, anything that we do cut, or we ever cut, would be a catastrophe to some people, but I'm saying, they should realize now that $150,000 of that wasn't necessary. That really, the cut right now, so that when they start with the arguments, as it stands right now, the cut is $200,000, because 150 is nullified.
I hear what you're saying, but the public.
Well, I'm just, it's, it's adequate to the people to know the truth before they start. They'll all be standing up saying, put back the 350, put back the 350. They won't know that it's not necessary to put back 350. All you have to put back is 200.
Yes.
I think that's.
You can tell them that after they read all those letters.
Read what letters?
Whatever it is that they're going to tell us.
It would be great if we could have an opening statement that, A, updated the, the financial aspect of the. aspect of the budget as of today, which is what you're talking about, the 150. And if we, I know everybody wants to have their moment, but if we could say, if you're not bringing anything new to the discussion, please rest assured, we heard the person in front of you who said, restore the money. I think there should be a time limit on how long people are able to speak, and that that should be adhered to. In the past, it's been two minutes or three minutes, I forget which, but--
Usually two minutes with the board finding--
Okay, I think that that's a good piece to have in play, because--
The chairman that's elected tonight has to lay those things out first.
And I think that should be laid out, so--
Could be any chairman here. Might even be you.
I believe it'll be that.
I'll call a point of order, because the agenda is a public hearing.
Say that again?
The agenda starts with a public hearing, and they have the right to say what they want to say.
Oh, I'm not questioning--
That's the way it is.
Yeah, I know.
It's on the agenda. It's on the agenda. Robert's Rules.
Well, you don't have to always follow Robert's Rules to the T, you know?
We kind of do.
Robert's Rule is not the rule of the nation. That's a guideline to how to run a meeting. I often, I went to Robert Rules meetings, where people taught me, when I was chairman a couple times at different charter commissions, how you better do Robert's Rules so you don't get in trouble. But it's not something that's ironclad across the nation, that this is it. It's a guideline. So, I mean, the guideline would be, why are you so afraid to tell the people the truth?
I think you're afraid to hear their reaction.
No.
Oh, no, no.
We're pretty aware--
I know the reaction's going to be the same. I know that they're not going to be pleased with it, but I think they should know the truth.
They will after the public hearing.
No, all they're going to know is public opinion.
That is a public hearing.
Right.
Public opinion.
But they're not going to know the truth, they're going to know the public appearing, opinion.
Again, I'm not going to argue all day.
I'm just following the agenda, that's all.
I just want to say that at every single budget public hearing that I've ever clerked, the chairman always makes an opening statement, and it's up to him what his opening statement's going to be.
Good.
There's always an opening statement.
Thank you. Okay, so Carl, so are we of the opinion that it would be important to have Carl give an update of the last two weeks since we had our last budget meeting, to update the figures that we're actually talking about?
At what point?
Before the meeting.
Again, the agenda says that it's a public hearing, and it's there, we listen to the public.
So you're saying that you wouldn't want them to know at the outset that the $150 is, is on, has been, has been addressed? That there's $150,000 that has already been addressed out of the $350,000 that was the budget, the proposed increases?
They will be very happy to hear that.
That's what I'm saying. So you're saying--
Maybe when the Board of Ed can bring it up too.
You're saying that you don't want them to hear that, and I am asking, I am saying that I would like them to hear that.
Me too.
I know you would.
Well, yeah. I don't understand what the point would be in not allowing them to know that.
It's simply the public hearing comes first on the agenda, and you can, I imagine the chair can explain that the--
What's the--
Council would like there to be information disseminated before they speak to us. I suppose you could do it that way, right?
Seeing how you've read Robert's Rules--
No, I'm saying--
What does Robert's Rule say about a public hearing?
It is the voice of the public.
Yeah, we know that.
And we listen to, yeah.
Exactly, they're here to give us their ideas.
Right.
But does it say in there that no one can make a statement before you start the public hearing?
It begins with a public hearing, that's all I--
I'm asking you a question. Does it specifically say that a statement can't be made before the public hearing begins?
I know that a public hearing does not include our voices, it includes theirs.
After a statement, during the voices, is to protect the argument back and forth, because if we argue or answer questions to, I expect 200 people here tonight, that, you know, we'd be here for, and Tom knows, we've done meetings like that, three, four hours on Board of Finance meetings, believe me. So I can see where that wouldn't happen, we just listen and patiently listen to their-- but they should know upfront that it isn't as impactful as when they walked in the door, because they don't get all this information. I don't understand why you wouldn't want the people to know that.
If Mary says that public hearings start with a statement, and that's how it's been done, then that's how you do it.
Okay.
But a public hearing--
No, we all understand that.
Okay.
That it, that we do not--
I'm going to go with your-- They are protocol, because we have, I'll go with whatever protocol you--
It's up to him what he wants, who addresses which statement.
So you are--
We have additional information that we can consider, we've done nothing about it.
Right.
And we won't do anything about it until everything is done, and we have a special meeting.
Right.
Following the public hearing.
So what you're saying is that that 150 doesn't even exist yet?
Wait a minute, so Carrie, if we are, if we give Carl the opportunity to speak and be transparent about where we actually stand today, what would be the objection to that transparency?
I'm only saying that the agenda says a public hearing. I defer again to Mary.
But it doesn't tell you how you can run a public hearing.
There's only one way to run a public hearing.
Who says that?
We listen to the public, that's the definition. But again, guys, I'm not arguing anymore. Mary said--
Right.
That there is a statement, so there can be a statement, that's all.
Okay, fine.
That's it.
All right, moving along. Number 13, Town Council Commission Committee Liaison Reports. Does anybody have a liaison report?
My liaison's not till next week.
Excuse me?
It's not till next week, my liaison.
They're on our agenda, right, for April 19th?
Yes.
The EDC?
Yes.
Yeah.
Police department doesn't have one this month, it was canceled.
Anything else? All right, then, item number 14, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to make the town council clear, only because I've been notified, Guilford got overrun last night at their public hearing, for their venue. Right now, the way this room is set up, chairs, 190 people. That's it.
Yeah.
If you take away the chairs, you can get to 350. If you get in front of this room, doesn't count for anything, except for you two people sitting here. Upstairs in the auditorium, it's 396, and you have an additional 58 people in the balcony. So if you're thinking you're going to have 200 people here, this room doesn't work.
I'm just, I just said that.
I know, Dennis, I'm just making--
I just think that, based on the reaction that I've heard--
Yes, and I'm--
I would think--
I'm getting filled in, that's why I came down here today and just verified my numbers.
That's excellent information, Jeff, thank you.
Just so you all make counsel, you may have to move upstairs.
This is Jeff Hess or our fire marshal?
I'm the fire marshal, that's why.
Thank you, Jeff.
That way, everybody here knows, I'm sorry, I couldn't make it at the beginning, I would have--
No, that's okay. So I don't know, who would make that decision?
I'm surprised.
Yeah, I think it's about--
Yeah, I thought, I was surprised too, that we were going to be here. I thought all along, it's needed, we're going to be upstairs.
To be honest, it was reserved a long time ago, way before.
Oh, that's already reserved?
No, the green room, the schedule that was put out by you guys, remember?
That they're going to try to undercut it.
Yeah.
And you had it in the Rose Room previously.
Correct.
Say that again?
Okay.
You've had, you've had public hearings in the Rose--
Can we--
Oh, yeah.
I think we can. First take, guys, and that's it.
It's 150.
That's what I'm saying.
So what did you say, seated is 190?
If you go just out and sit right now, from here back, you can put 190 people seated.
Okay, what if they're--
How about if we--
Standees.
You need people.
You're going to, they're going to want to sit.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, nobody's going to want to--
But I'm just saying--
We don't have 190 chairs.
No matter, even if you have standing and sitting, once you put chairs in the equation, it's as if there is chairs everywhere.
Okay, how far can you bring the chairs up, Jeff?
I'm going right from this pillar, Danny.
That's it?
I counted from this pillar all the way back.
So what I'm trying to say is, if we took a couple of these, or if we moved us crowded to there, could you bring the people up to here?
You're going to gain what?
Nothing.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. You're going to gain 20 people, Danny.
So then, can we actually change the venue to upstairs, or not, Mr. Chair?
What's your recommendation?
As long as you post it on the doors.
As long as you post it on the door.
I would recommend, just so you don't have to start a meeting and move a meeting like they did in Guilford last night, post it on the boards that the, due to potential capacity issues, and go upstairs. That is my recommendation.
I would agree.
As the fire marshal.
This is a good time to tell you, so you know how to bug that room upstairs, yeah.
What did you say, Mary, about reserve? What, is that room reserved?
No, it is available, I'm just saying, this meeting space was reserved when we did the budget calendar way back in January.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So like Jeff said, you're going to put the notice on the door.
Right.
It's been changed, the venue's been changed upstairs.
I'm just going by what I've read on Facebook and everything else--
That's a good--
What other people have said, that a lot of people are to come because of the $350,000 cut to the Board of Ed.
Exactly.
You're going to get the moms and all their kids here. We've had it before, and you know.
Okay, do we need to make a motion, or vote on that, or anything? I honestly think it's a--
You have to notice on the doors.
Okay, that's, I think that's a good idea, because unless there's a snowstorm.
Unfortunately, you're going to have a little work to do.
Due to potential capacity issues, by the fire marshal's meeting must be moved upstairs.
Thank you.
Just saying.
Just saying. That's-- No, no, hey--
That's what Guilford did. They shut the meeting down and made it move to the highest--
Again, we're glad that we have a fire marshal that thinks--